Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. Commissioner Clark and Commissioner England are here. Commissioner Wozniak is absent with excuse. And so we will move on to public comments. Senior public will move on. Elected officials and department head updates. I'm going to start with Doug.
I don't have much. I'll mention that I will be on vacation next week.
What?
And that for your meeting over here on the tenth, it does coincide with our follow-up survey with the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. And I will do my best to be available. And we're going to talk actually about the sequential intercept project in Cheshire County on that day. But we got a busy day over here on that day. Hopefully, the parking lot should be all done by then. The driveway, they are in the midst of working on that.
Yeah, how's it looking? Are they moving along quickly?
They ran into, I don't know to what extent it was unexpected, but the drainage, the back hill, they took a little longer with that. I think they found the problem. And yet it seemed to slow them down a little bit from what I understand. But I think they're now done with that. And they're probably ready to, they're grading everything out now. I expect the price start paving soon.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's everything I, that's everything I had.
All right, any questions? Seeing none. Cheryl, do you have anything?
No, I'll probably just be part of some of the discussions you have.
Okay. All right, Kim, do you have anything?
I do. You asked me to just give the commissioners a heads up that we have been working on revisions to the employee handbook. And Suzanne, I have to give a big shout out to Suzanne. She did a huge piece. She took a policy writing class and wanted to use her new skills. And so she did a phenomenal job. I have Catherine's gone through it. Steve Perrin has gone through it for some of the safety stuff like evacuations and things like that. Misty went through it while, last week. And Chris has it right now. So I guess the hope is that in July, it would be ready to come to you for review and approval.
Yeah, that would be the, the perfect scenario would be that I'll get it, I'll read it over the, I've started reading it. I'll read it over the weekend and or get it done by Friday, one or the other, and get it back to you. And then we can send it out ahead of time to the commissioner so they have time to read it. So if there's any question marks, questions they have or any, anything like that, then that's what, that they can do it then.
Yeah, I know Misty indicated that she had a couple of points that needed to be clarified with Cheryl, which I'll make sure get done too before it goes anywhere else. But and then the only other thing I have is that I too am on vacation next week. And I will be back, I will be back in the office on Monday, July eighth.
Okay.
Kim?
Yes.
It goes back a ways. So I don't know if you saved the suggestions that came from us on the policy handbook that I sent about a couple of years ago?
Yes.
You, did you have those still?
I do have those still and yes.
Impressive. I mean, I could find them and I don't, I just certainly don't remember them, but I remember.
I had a whole folder of, because I sent it out to all department heads. And I had a whole folder of recommendations from department heads. Some obviously we could include some were too department specific to go into a manual that's intended to be countywide. Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
And just remind us the, to the commissioners, the personnel handbook, it's a working document. So yes, we approve it. And yes, we try to, we try in theory to do it every two to three years. And in time, if something, if something comes along, I said in theory. I, I, if something comes along that we need to change or add to the policy, that's why it's a working document because it's never changing. And even when we all look at it, some employee will find something that just doesn't make sense. And it's right there in front of us and we didn't see it. And we'll change it right then and there because their point is well taken. It's happened twice since we, since I've been here. So no biggie. Anything else, Kim?
When will that be done?
It will be done, I'll have it to back to Kim this, either Friday or on Monday. And then we'll send it out to you all so you have it to read. And then we'll have Kim, you know, be present and go through any questions that you may have with it.
So is it three pages, ten pages?
Let's just say lots of pages.
It's eighty pages.
Eighty? Whoa.
Whoa. So it's, it's, you know, we, in the past, we've done it in many different ways. You know, we've had, we had it where we all came together for like ten meetings. We did sections at a time. But you know, I think the core is there. And really, it's, it's looking at if there's been any changes within the course or if there's new things, social media changes that we need to do, whatever it may be, those are the changes that we looked at, so.
So my guy had to go through the negotiations?
No. It's consistent with what we're doing with, within the unions. And they memorialize anything that's not in the contracts. They memorialize our handbook. So it's, they understand that it's part of our process. So, okay, Kim, you all set?
Yes, all set.
Okay. Catherine?
So a couple of weeks back, I came to you asking for guidance on what to do with that swing set. And you suggested we put it up for a silent bid. So I was able to open the bids on the fourteenth at two thirty PM. And the successful bid is here. And we contacted them and they were going to come and remove it last weekend. So this number goes to the Exeter Association just as your guidance. So I appreciate that. It was actually a smooth process. It let everybody to be aware of the process. And today I haven't heard any lamenting losing the swings that which was really not to any safety standards in the first place. And just, it looked pretty in the back, but it was time to have it moved on.
And I'm guessing that at some point it might have been used. But it was clear to me, any use that's going along is probably a lunch swing where somebody that's taking a break at lunchtime is outside because you can see that it's more of an adult looking grass burn than it is a child swing burn. So, all right, thank you very much.
Bring in man.
One thirty and fifty-one cents.
One thirty, I want one.
Hundred and thirty dollars.
And fifty-one cents, okay.
I would have been.
It was silent, so nobody knew us.
Yes.
Okay.
And any other questions or anything you want to then?
I think the Medicaid one, let's hold on a while a little bit so you get a little bit more information. And also Jack is here too because I think Jack will want to hear this and have his input.
So.
All right, but, but I will, where are we at with census?
Oh, I remember.
Are we over a hundred?
We were.
Looking it down.
We were over a hundred, sorry, we were at a hundred and ten yesterday.
Yes.
Okay, which is probably a record for the last three years.
For the last probably three, four years?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe.
Hundred is our max with your staff and I finished right now.
And, and you remember, it's, it's not an easy task to get the, to get the numbers up because you can bring in three people, but we can have people that are here with us recovering. They leave or people that are here until they're not. And they, and, and so all of a sudden you back down three. And then you go back up two and down one. And so it's, the get to that number is actually a good thing. And it just, it's, I think it's working. And I applaud the, the Catherine and her team as a whole, look into this and knowing that, that there's a waitlist and there's a need and how can we make it happen?
How many on the top floor right now?
The, the one floor that is, there's ten people on the floor that is not fully documented.
And we'll be discussing later the status of the mandate for an RN to be on the call twenty-four seven.
I can just give you a brief update right now. So I don't remember if we've spoken since we did an initial meeting with all the required people, including somebody from our oversight and governing board. So Commissioner England participated in that. And at this point, my team is dividing and conquering to.
Dividing and conquering, nice.
Well, it was quite a meeting. We had, you know, full house in units. It's not the most effective and efficient way to continue to figure out how to do something that nobody knows how to do. There's no.
That was an excellent meeting.
Oh, thank you. We don't know what we don't know. And this is throughout the whole United States. This week, our director, Nurse Jean Robert Nelson, is actually down at the Nadana Conference. And the huge component there is most people, they're, they want to figure out, does anybody know what the solution is? Because we don't know what we don't know. We don't know how to invent RNs. We don't know how to hit some of the qualifiers that are put into that rulemaking, which indicates that you have to have data-driven management of your staffing. And it's not based on just census. You've got to base it on your clinical presentations. Well, the clinical presentations are fluctuating. And we do have a very robust system in our opinion as to how we manage the fluctuations here. And that's before this mandate has been imposed. But that said, there's going to have to be some sort of a data-driven effort with competencies proving that we've got the staff that can meet these requirements. So by dividing and conquering, we've got different teams looking at different elements that need to be addressed. We have to have a document ready by August eighth that shows what our roadmap is going to be in order to get to the two-year P mark of having minimum staffing, the RN twenty-four seven, the point five five RN average per resident day. So on the other hand, there's still huge pressures to overturn this. Just last week, we were meeting with the New Hampshire Association of Counties' personal administrators affiliate with two staff representatives from Shaheen's office, giving them a little more detail again. So, you know, again, full court press and that's on the affiliate side for the counties. But with the Healthcare Association, the American Healthcare Association has an actual filed, I don't know, lawsuit, I guess, trying to get an injunction to stop this madness.
Yeah. And in talking to the administrators last week too, one of the things that came up from Ray is that they're just treating it like it's going to happen. And something makes it that it doesn't happen, then, then that's a good thing. Because he said exactly what he just said. And you can't go out and just make people appear out of nowhere. You just, you know, we, we can do what we can do to try and see if people can come here from outside of the state of New Hampshire or steal from other counties or whatever it may be. But, you know, his biggest issue over there is that the cost of living, if, if the cost of living here is bad over on the city coast in that area, is just as bad, if not on some levels worse. But making that median house that is what, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars over there? Here's three hundred thousand something. So, so he's like, we're just treating it like it's, it's going to happen. What do we need to do to come up with a plan? Because, you know, either we're going to hold this to pines if we can't get it done.
But it's truly unfortunate that months ago, some bureau staff or some groups, bureau reps, decided to come up with this unreasonable regulation. And the amount of energies of, of upper echelon personnel to be trying to solve it is, was humongous.
I think it should be case by case or state by state and not, not, not take all of this altogether and make the policy because Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, Florida, are, you know, their, their ratios are RN to fifty, one RN to fifty, you know, something like that. And we've seen that. We've seen the reports about these situations. In New Hampshire, it's a whole different world on some levels, at least when it comes to the counties. You know, where we really try to ensure that the individuals have the care that they deserve to have. And that's something that I think having, and the team takes great pride in that, that they want to make sure that the individual living here has a quality life that they should, should have. And to make a policy that's overarching over everyone, when we have some of the lowest deficiencies in the country, when we have some of the best quality care in the country, is, it's just, it's just, we are, yeah, it's worse. And that's any party because CMS to me, or the Center for Medicaid Services, seems to be a total little governmental funded.
And I've said this before, but I spent thirty years of my life making monthly rounds at all of Keane's nursing homes. And Keane's nursing homes on this level here, whereas Maplewood is way up here.
Right. But to, to make a policy that doesn't take a look at what the quality care is and how we're doing it, it's, it's, to me, it's just, it's just wrong, so.
I suspect it's based on emotional challenges in the race for undesirable outcomes, which we're not immune to. We can similarly have a bad experience, a bad moment, a bad outcome. That we're, nobody is above that. That's going to happen everywhere. It's just when that is the only narrative that's out there. And unfortunately, when our president in two State of the Union speeches, he states silently this last one, but the first two, he went on based in nursing homes. And essentially, through the, President Biden, in his State of the Union address in the first two, he really threw nursing homes under the bus as to being the cause of so many deaths, which that statistic actually wasn't even accurate. If you look at home healthcare, the statistics for deaths from COVID, I believe was even a slightly higher percentage point than the nursing home deaths, so.
But there, but what, what happens is that it, it, prior to any of those, you were hearing about nursing. During COVID, you were hearing about nursing, nursing homes were on the front page of media across the country. Fair or not, they were. And so that's exactly what you're saying, the emotional stories. It was forefront. You guys remember it. It was forefront. You had the place down in Massachusetts and Springfield, which is a them. And all those, in, in, in across the country, you're hearing the same type of stories. And it's just.
What struck me about the whole thing is that it seemed like of all the things that went wrong or bad story, that they thought that having RNs can solve that.
I mean, it's one of your struggles, but I think you have more than just an RN issue up your right. And you may have like an LNA or dietary or environmental position issues at the same time.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Okay, I'm going to keep on moving on chief.
Yes.
So just here because you missed us? I'm, of course, you know, what else would I think every Wednesday morning to join you gentlemen? And what is? Oh. Actually, I'm not one of those chiefs. I don't eat constantly or feel that there has to be a lunch at every night. I, I honestly, I miss a lot of meals. But, no, so things that EMS are moving forward. All right, that's all we really strive for is to continue to move our bar forward. Our staffing is fantastic right now. Where I feel that if anything were to happen in the county, we could staff what we needed to very quickly. The quality of providers coming in is getting better. And we're moving to raise the bar, hopefully, quite well. Deputy Chief Kramer has handled that aspect very well for the last several months in his position as clinical services. Also, the addition of the deputy chief of operations at Atkins has assisted in that. Of, they're running the day-to-day. They handle what's the, as Chris terms it, the minutia of operations and clinical on that daily basis. So that allows me to focus more on other activities. One thing that we, I had one of my employees come and speak to you down the course here a couple of months ago on community outreach and updating the Sampson Grant aspect of the community liaison. So really taking the ball and running with that. Since really the beginning of May, we've had twenty-plus community events or trainings. So that includes staff lead training, Narcan administration, CPR, first aid. Really a wealth of outreach into the communities, all right? And that's also kind of spilled over into a lot of the community groups that are already in place throughout the county are realizing that not everything is a medical emergency to go to the emergency room. They're seeing a lot more of mental crises that can be handled by a crisis intervention team and places like Madoff Family Services and other groups that deal with mental health are trying to find ways to let patients not fall through the cracks. All right, and not just get thrown into the ER where now because of state legislation, the hospitals have to find a long-term bed in a mental health facility within seventy-two hours.
Chad, is there the, you know, what, what was it called, Charlie? Sheriff's Department used some time ago. Is there some sort of list of resources that you folks can use as a quenching kind of thing? When you go to someplace and it doesn't seem like, wow, this is a hospital case?
That's the tough part, Commissioner, is per EMS protocols, the rules that we live by, what our medical director says, for the most part, if nine-one-one is activated and EMS or ambulance arrives on scene, there's really two courses of action. Either you transport the patient to the emergency room or if you're, if the patient doesn't want to go and they're mentally intact enough, they can sign a refusal of care, meaning they don't want to be transported. They don't want our intervention. There really hasn't been a third option. And that's really what we're starting to explore now. The state protocols are allowing for ambulances to transport to a crisis center or other destinations other than the emergency department. So speaking with Cheshire Medical Center and multiple other agencies, whether it's Keane Fire, like I said, Madoff Family Services, honestly, the list is rather extensive of who. Sarah Canel has been talking to South, Southwestern Community Services, Home Healthcare and Hospice, Madoff Humane Society has been.
Pardon?
Pardon? Pardon again? Uh, main. Humane Society, yes. Because one thing that, and I run into this personally myself, is you arrive on scene and the patient needs to go to the hospital, but they don't want to leave their pets.
Right.
All right, so the Humane Society actually has a program where if something like that were to happen, if they're contacted and they know about it, they can go and care for that person's pet while they're in the hospital. So that, again, is kind of that all-encompassing holistic approach to patient care of, we're not only just taking care of their medical ailments, but their mental health and reducing their anxiety of an already stressful situation by saying, nope, your pets are going to be cared for. Don't worry about it. Let's take care of you right now. With, um, let's see, Doorways, Narcan Program that is out. We spoke with Keane Fire the other, last week. And they're going to be helping us distribute these packages, which basically they're helping anyone. So they'll have contraceptives, they'll have Narcan, they'll have some first aid stuff and other little things in there. If they need it, they can go and grab this package from different drop stations throughout the county for whatever assistance. All right, and that's also through the Sampson Grant.
Can I just chime in for a second? Speaking of two things, one is Sarah Canel, I mean, she was at a meeting when I was at last week at Antioch, which is now MFS. And, well, Antioch is now at MFS.
Oh.
I mean, MFS is now at Antioch building, Avon Street. And so we, and in the room was probably about thirty-some-odd different providers of children, of per children. And the whole idea was to get to know each other on some levels and on a quarterly basis, coming together to see how we could build on relationships. If there's grants out there that we could build to really start supporting each other, is there, you know, would it make sense? What happens all too often, I see this all the time. You know, you're asked to step into a, onto a board or a committee or ad hoc or something. And there's already four other groups doing the same work. And if we could somehow start to see how we could bring people together, maybe that's, maybe it's, you know, in this situation, is there a grant out there that could be, you know, could help us help coordinate all these services? Because there was a lot of, I mean, the, the Keane Police and the Keane Fire Department were there along with Sarah and myself and others around the room. And there were churches, you know, interfaith were there. And there was, and we, you know, they'd say, we, we don't know where to turn in this situation. Well, we could take a look at doing something with that. Well, those are the conversations we need to have. But it's great to have the conversations, it's the next step. And so we're starting to have those conversations.
Maybe it's time to, you know, to revisit the, you know, the task force thing where you, I guess you'd have to form some organization to take control of that. Or we're just bringing these people together occasionally, all of these.
Well, that's what MFS is trying to do.
So that they all talk to each other and they're used to talking.
Yeah, and, and on some levels, they're used to talking to each other one-on-one to certain people, but not to everybody in the room. Under NICE was there, I mean, you name it, there's thirty-some-odd different groups. And so we're going, I think what came out of it is that we're going to come back together, possibly as soon as next month or the month after, just because it's a startup thing of conversation, but move to quarterly and come up with a plan on how do we start communicating better with each other? But more importantly, what else can we be doing to really make this something that makes sense? And like I said, and I'll be, I'll be touching on this later on in my conversation is, I'm struggling with the idea that we have groups doing housing, we have groups doing refugee work, we have groups doing childcare, all critical needs. We've got companies that are saying they're, they're trying to think how to survive because they can't find staffing and that they may have to move on to move to a different site to make that happen. We've already seen one company leave because of reasons of that they got bought out and they were downsizing in that Smith Medical or whatever it was, one, a, by the level. I'm, I'm really worried for the counties as a whole. Because these companies, if we don't, e-everybody's trying to do good work, trying to, but if we don't start trying to, and I don't think we have to build an office through the county, I'm not saying that. But I do think we need to recognize certain people and, and maybe they, we support them on some levels. But I'll talk about that in a little bit. But I, I just think that it's important, you know, we are the biggest prevention provider in Cheshire County, if you think about it. If you think about connected families in New Hampshire, working with kids at high risk, you know, that you may see in a crisis situation, you may be bringing to the hospital, then they sit there for two, three weeks because there is no place to send them. You know, those, you know, we have restorative justice, which is now restorative community. We have drug court, we have behavioral health court, we have, you know, outside agency funding. And there's, I'm probably missing other things that we are doing. But so what Chief is talking about from his level is what's the next step for us? What's the most thoughtful way to look at it and pragmatic way to look at it so that we can start trying to build something that meets their needs and meets the community needs at the same time? They get to a scene, this person just is in crisis, but it's not a, it's not even sometimes a mental health, it's a need, it's a need for them in the moment of crisis. They're at a gas station, they're, they just, you know, walked away from home or something like that. What are the next steps that you do?
Or they're a caregiver for, and a loved, a loved one that has pushed them to their limit and they. Or they're a caregiver for, and a loved, a loved one that has pushed them to their limit and they've just reached their limit, they don't know what else to do. So they call nine one one, and that's where EDMS, police and fire are really the tip of the spear in this. So those three, those first responders, knowing what resources are available throughout the county.
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, quickly Googling something or, or whatever, them knowing where to turn. Is that next step, and that's what Sarah's really been working on a lot the last couple of months.
And we, and we, um, just one last thought is that I've sat in too many courtrooms where parents. Have to find them, have to be uh found and neglectful of their child. These are parents that are, are just in tears because they're not being neglectful, they're at their wits' end, they don't know where to turn if their child was in crisis. But the state process is, if you, if you're turning them over to D C Y, like they, they don't know what else to do, that's how bad it is. They have to be found and neglect, and, and it's, it's, so if we can, you know, build a better system. And we had that system thirty years ago, twenty years ago, when before the, before the state of New Haven started doing these cuts. So if we can build a system that meets.
Like a crisis coordinator.
On some levels, but.
That, okay, that, you know, you, you can exist on a membership basis kind of a thing, you know, all of these organizations that have. Things going on in their little worlds. Each one of their budgets could have twenty bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
And then decide for the grant or something, anyway, you'd have a, you'd have a. A central person or office or something and to call and make the call, sort of like a dispatch.
Yeah.
You know.
And, and, and does that need to be housed with the county? I don't know, but it does need to be housed with the county, I think. Somebody at MFS could be doing just as well as, as we could, but we should be a partner to that at least, we should be seen as. As supportive, because the stronger we make our community, the better our communities are going to be on every level. And that goes for the same thing for the, the housing and all that, all those other issues, so uh sorry to.
No, I, I appreciate it, Chris, and that, that's really where it's going, is what is that next step? We're having all these meetings, we're, we're getting all this great information and everyone wants to do it. That, that's the biggest feedback I've gotten from Sarah on this, of everyone wants to do this. But they don't know what that, that next step is, they, they want to continue the meetings, they want to have these conversations. And make this into something that works.
And, and in reality? In reality. Because I, I was in this role and we used to have wraparound teams. And I was part of MFS, MFS's wraparound team as a representative from uh Madana Developmental Services back in the day. We always had money, I mean, money to be able to utilize in certain situations. That's what it comes down to, everybody's so tight with every penny, and when, any, last year when we argued. That MFS needed to have a bump up in, 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 in their amount because the state of New Hampshire pulled. The money away from us and moved it to another part of the state, well, doesn't mean that the issue's gone away, it hasn't. And so this is just another one of those situations where we need just to figure it out and, and, and see if there's, you know, if there's a, some level. Because that's what it comes down to, is if everybody sees it, it's how do we even fund it? And if the, you know, and that's where I think, I want them to meet one more time. And I want, just in the meantime, I'll talk to Suzanne and say, is there a grant out there that we could take a look at? Is there, you know, if, if, i- i- is there a relationship between um uh connected families in Hampshire? And, and, and is there, is there some relationship there that we could, we could be doing something with when it comes to children? Um, you know, so it's, there, there are ways for us to look at it. And again, I don't, I don't see us having to grow government bigger. But I do think that we should have a voice in, in this because it's affecting our ci- our citizens, our families. That, and so if we can make it, make the process stronger, it's only benefiting all of us.
So how much of your time, not your time particularly, but the MFS's time is up spent on these? Other than emergency medical issues?
I don't have that initial number, but I know over my experience and, you know, not only in. Cheshire County but other places, a lot of our call volume is the mental health crisis. Or the, I don't know what else to do, so I'm calling nine one one, uh and that's increasing nationwide. Because a lot of people are looking for help and they don't know where to turn. So they, yeah, de facto go back to call nine one one.
Which is really sad.
It is, a lot of people aren't self sufficient or able to quote self-help. Um, so it, it is sad that they don't know what options are out there for them. And resort to just calling nine one one, so it's, it is a growing concern throughout, no matter where you are.
An unrelated question, compared to say six months ago, how are relations between your department and that of the city of Keith?
Our relationship is. What's a good word for it? Um exponentially better.
Exponentially better.
Yes, uh the officer in charge, uh Jason Martin and I have standing meetings every two weeks. Uh that also includes our deputies and he and I are of the same mindset of. It doesn't matter about politics or whatever, it's, let's do what's best for the citizens, whether it's. For the city of Keene citizens or the remainder of the county. And that's a lot of the conversations that I'm having with Chiefs now is. Let's move it forward, let's help our citizens when they need it and not worry about. Town lines or this or that, let's just go run calls and take care of people.
There's too many silos involved.
I use that word quite a bit, Terry.
Yeah, it's, it's really a shame.
But the silos are starting to come down, which is a good thing.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that it?
That's all I.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, first up on our scheduled item unless another department, Davis, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Just one thing I think of, um, actually.
Oh. Don't, don't play with emotions here.
No, I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Dan. So first up, we have uh Master agenda item number one one eight five, Cheshire Community Power Rate Adjustment. Commissioner Clark is the talk action, expect vote on the application of discretionary reserve adder, the amount of. Zero point zero zero three per kilowatt hour affected for the August twenty twenty four through January twenty twenty five rate period. Commissioner Clark.
Sure, thank you, um as you know, uh Cheshire County launched into um. Community power a big way um this last spring. And um we've been enjoying period electrical rates, we've enlisted to this point nine. Uh Cheshire County communities to join us, um seven of them active as of June first and two more that will be active on October first. Um all those towns that are representative uh to um what we call Cheshire Community Power. Um and we decided we met uh last week and decided that we are going to take advantage of one of the benefits of. Being a member of C B C N H, um beyond just uh lower rates, one of the, uh, one of the benefits is. Is be able to place an adder onto our rate uh in order to accumulate. Um an accessory reserve fund that, that the county and each one of the towns can use. To uh fund um uh energy related projects somewhere down the road. One of the uh, one of the uh things that we, we had to make sure of is that we didn't make the adder too large. And, and it was pretty much timed around um every six months, utilities uh. Announce their new rates, they go out to the market, they announce their new rates for the six month period. And uh C B C N H does that as well, just it's more of a coordination thing. The uh, the uh utilities have announced their rates. And they're all in the twelve point five cent area. For, this is just the supply side uh portion. Um in any case, C B C N H's Risk Management Finance Committee met yesterday.
Yeah.
Um there was a quorum of finance, not a, of, of, of risk management, so.
One side met, neither did.
Well, yeah, they were all there, so uh finance uh. Did their thing and, and approved, uh you know, they, they took in, they, they took the report of the C, CEO of the rates. He had decided that uh C B C N H can, can announce. But the Risk Management has to call the meeting and do that today, in any case, uh those rates um. Uh they're embargoed until Thursday, I mean, I do have them here uh for you folks to look at. Um but they are embargoed until um Thursday, because they're not.
Can I just go back, uh when, when the, the supply side, the distribution side, ever source side. They've asked for, I think, a seventeen percent increase in, in, in their numbers, which I struggle with. And I'll say that openly because of how much profit they've shown over the last few years, and I get it, capitalism, I get it, but. Capitalism doesn't go, shouldn't go unchecked, um because it all comes back to us on some levels. When, is the numbers that, that you just talked about averaging in the percentage increase, or is that the. Average that they would have now moving forward?
Yeah, uh the numbers that we're talking about have nothing to do with the distribution costs.
So the supply side is not.
Supply side, the supply side is, is, is one thing and the distribution cost because of the uh. If anybody calls the industry, so.
Yeah.
So that the utilities can both sell and distribute uh, uh energy at the same time. Um so the supply uh, uh side on, on the utility side is just passed through, they don't take any money on it or anything. What we are talking about is what it costs to maintain the lines, holes, uh and staff in order to go out on a nice evening. And get your electricity back on, sort of thing, yeah, they went to the P U C, uh just at the beginning of the month and asked for a seventeen percent increase. Uh which is uh, the consumer advocates already questioned that, um we discussed it yesterday. And part of that, at least part of it, um was because the utilities. Under collected money from their, from their large users, you know, your, your, your large.
Oh, wait, 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 they over, over collected on their smaller users?
Yeah.
And then they under collected on their bigger users?
Yeah.
What does that say?
Yeah, um and so.
Boy, we have material for tomorrow, Terry.
So uh, so in any case, that, so that at least, at least part of that seventeen percent, um they're asking. Uh to absorb that, rather than go back and, and collect that money. You know, or, or eat it, uh they're asking the P U C to put that in the distribution rate where all classes would pay. Which is. Uh, kind of unfair, so um legal, uh C, C B C N H is looking at uh intervening. Uh the P U C on that in simple. Anyway, that's, that's a whole separate issue.
Okay, alright.
Uh the rates uh that will be, that we're talking about will only affect on August first. Um uh, as I said, the, the, the utilities have already announced their rates, which is uh. Okay, ever source is ten point forty, uh four five eight cents, um Liberty is ten point nine seven six. A unitile is ten and a half cents, ours is uh substantially below that. But I can't, you know, we can't really announce that now because it hasn't, never one, it hasn't been approved by the board. So, and it's just being approved. But I do have the chart here for you to look at if you wanted to. See that, and if um someone's on board and they want to ask for it in, in twenty four hours, if we're able to do that, everything. Uh we're asking for a one third of a cent uh adder to the uh, what we, what we would do is uh. If you look at this rate chart, we have a brand basic, which is twenty four point three percent uh renewable, which is the. State mandated level of renewable content, uh we have another product called brand plus, it's thirty three percent. Clean fifty is fifty percent and clean one hundred is one hundred percent. Out of all of those, our default rate this year, uh I mean, excuse me, for this August to next January. Will be lower than all of those other products. Um I mean, excuse me, all of the, all of, all of those other products, excuse me. Clean one hundred is the only product that we will offer that is more than the facility, uh utility default. So you could, you could take uh clean fifty percent of energy. Uh renewable energy and still pay less uh than ever social utility. Okay, so um we want to start collecting, if this is chart. Where's page four? That breaks down, um at the top is Cheshire D A V, which is a, 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 an G. Shifted just even, the county uses on facilities that make award, etc. Um if you look over, the annualized uh, uh load is uh forty five hundred megawatts or four point five gigawatts. Um at three cent, I think, at a third of a cent annualized. Uh we would, we would be. At the end of the six month period, we would accumulate thirteen thousand five hundred dollars that we could put into a fund specifically for Cheshire County. Government proj- uh projects, each one of those towns, the members towns um have, have amounts there as well, with all totals a hundred eighty six thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh each one of the towns were there except for Roxbury, but I spoke with uh. A smart phone.
Yeah.
Um on the phone afterwards, she had, he was hating him that he couldn't be there.
Is he still a select one?
Yes, he is, well, him and his wife pretty much still run Roxbury.
Yeah. Yeah, well, because he's been a select one for, for decades.
And he's, well, and I talked to him about that, and he said, well, you know, if, if I could only find somebody else to do it. Gone, New York City, but, but he's, he's still doing it.
In many cases.
Moderator and everything else, yeah.
So he agreed uh that this was a good plan and that it will last until January, uh till the next rate period. And which we would uh, uh look at it and reevaluate inside whether or not we wanted to continue with another, another. Could be totally separate or stop it altogether and just uh. Take, take the money that, you know, it's an anymore funds and do some sort of. I guess it would ask it, um this is going to be accumulated in-house at C B C N H. So it's not like we have to set up a separate fund or anything for it, we don't have to do anything. It's just that when, when we have a project, what we want to do, and we just fill out a paper. Here to the board of uh C B C N H saying this is what we want to do, we want to employ the money, this much money. And they would cut us a check and go into then, then our conference and then we decide where.
Yeah.
Um in any case, that's it in a nutshell. Um I wish.
Will, will, um, will uh C P C N H be doing a press release on their numbers?
Yeah, yeah, uh.
And they'll send that, they'll send that to us so that we can.
Yeah, but same as it was last time.
Make some comments from you and I kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um yeah, we, you know, that press release is going to be very favorable.
Yeah.
Sure, um because uh they also discuss um all of the third party rates that are out there as well. And they're all in the uh, the ten and a half or eleven cent range.
Yeah.
Um so for some reason, we're lower. She's saying, so I.
Is this a, um, a reflection also? Uh some of the monies that we 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 are able to bring in that can help offset those costs that they utilize that is just just the true cost. You know, we um instead of having shareholders getting monies, we we. That revenue is collected as a whole for every, and then that helps bring the rate down at times.
That's what primary reserves, yeah, there's primary reserves and accessory reserves.
Okay.
What we're talking about is accessory reserves.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about this number uh of that that ne- the number that's going to be told to us on.
Thursday.
Thursday. Is that a reflection of them utilizing some level of reserves to help offset? Okay, because that's what it was there for.
Yeah, the general policy at first, the the you know, the 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 policy, when we first started in October twenty one. Uh was that we were going to uh collect this reserve until we got three years. Uh of 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 operating expenses in into that reserve.
Yeah.
And since then, we've reevaluated saying, well, you know, we don't need to grow it that fast. You know, so we we're going to put more emphasis on keeping uh the rates lower for people. And you know, just because of as we gain experience, uh you know, the risk management people. Um started looking at it and and reevaluating whether or not, you know, how much risk is there really that you need to collect that? That reserve, that amount of that reserve, operating days that fast. They've they've discovered that, you know, it really isn't. So that um you know, we're we're utilizing that that reserve, that primary reserve. Uh to hedge rates so that you can guarantee pretty much that we're going to be averages uh below everybody else.
Okay.
Alright, so in this, in this.
So this is good news, especially for the for those communities that um have chosen to go with um Cheshire County.
Right, so um and this is all voluntary, voluntary actually, by the way, you know, um. This will be our default rate, but every individual uh rate payer can opt. Out of that, we're gonna, we're gonna be creating a new, a new uh product. And that product is called Community Basic. So it it we will have five products rather than the four that we have now. So if someone somewhere down the line don't want to pay that buck eighty. Um they can opt out of it and go back to Grant Basic, they can they can go to Grant Plus or where or where. Or one of the other products that they want.
And and the other thing in all this, and and it's, I was told the other day, it's about ninety nine percent of everybody's like grant on granite basic. Is that, is that a real?
Uh well, there are several towns uh that that their their um their default rate is uh. Is Grant Plus thirty three percent.
Okay.
Peterborough. Think Harrisville, uh Lebanon. Couple other towns haven't had, have done that. But yeah, our opt-out rate um is only. It's one, little over one percent. So yeah, it's it's sorry.
But what's interesting to me is that this number you're talking about, this this add-on adder. Towns could all come together with Cheshire Community Power and do a bigger project at some point. Or they could look at their own facilities in their own towns.
Right.
And say, you know, we'd like to put some heat pumps in here because we think it's more effective or. You know, a a small array of solar panels to help offset the water treatment facilities of that that, you know, so they they have their choice. It's, you know, it may be because some of the towns, they're they're generating a lot more money than what we're generating because they have a higher kilowatt. Um take intake. And so for them to be able then to choose to either. Be part of a big group as a whole or take care of some of these small projects and then by doing so, not putting it on. The budget in the budget is a savings to everybody. It's a double win. You're getting low electrical and at the same time. Able to take a look at your own projects and your own community and see if you can take care of it.
In fact, um remember the representative from Gilson.
Yeah.
Uh who was a little skeptical at first.
Yeah.
Uh but then he started realizing, oh, yeah, you know, we've been talking about uh putting solar panels to to for our streetlights.
Yeah.
Who was that? Who was that Gilson? Uh Brian. Nick or somebody, um Nick or whatever or something.
Yeah, nice guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think he's newly.
Yeah, he's in the selection, he's in the selection.
Cause I know Park didn't run again.
Yeah, Glenn Londer's chair.
Yeah.
We went to school together.
Okay.
You know, look, they might do.
Let's keep going. I didn't bring my boots, I don't.
Yeah, so I guess um um we have, we have two things here. One, one document that Chris had signed uh asking the uh board of directors to. Uh create this new adder um product for us. And a document that the commissioners would sign utilizing um this this adder to be. They're taking back.
And Jack did sign off on it and you go back.
So uh I would make a motion that uh Cheshire County increase uh its uh. Electrical rate uh through C B C M H by the inclusion of a of a third of a cent adder.
I will second that motion.
All right, any questions? Do you know, Commissioner England?
Hi.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, now it's my turn.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Uh I'm sorry, it's your turn and I'm jumping in. I'll wait, I want to apprise you of. Potential problems with this uh paving project that may be time sensitive. But I'll do it when you'd like me to, and if you.
Like like I'm not going to want to hear about now.
All right, you want to do this now?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're on site probably up to another week. They maybe maybe done in in four to five days. But there are a number of items that got reviewed in a walkthrough that happened almost a year ago now. With Steve Horton, Rod and Les, that they appear to not be planning to to do. And Les is trying to get an answer from the guy, the lead guy here. Are you planning to? And he's very passive aggressive, but from some of what's happening. Uh by appearances, it looks like maybe not. And. The biggest question would be at least one of the storm basin drains in the parking lot. Because they didn't take out six feet of pavement up to that drain and Les is saying, why, why do you not take out the pavement? If you're going to be working on the on the drain. He's even concerned about the storm basins down in the driveway where you could lose your small vehicle if you're not careful driving up. That may be the most alarmist thing, and we don't know yet. But we had agreed on a couple carve out things in the in terms of um. Where I park and the employee of the month has a parking spot, really low cost things. But they didn't grade that out. There's going to be like a five or six inch drop off if at the way it looks now. Um. Going around the corner of the building where the set up the booking areas and then the foxtrot. The agreement was to make that a straight cut instead of that loopy thing that exists now, if you can picture it. And they've um graded it out as a loopy thing and not a straight cut. Again, they haven't done the work yet. But and all those things were agreed and witnessed uh by those three people. Rod's not here. Les is meeting, setting up a meeting with Steve. He tried to get him on the phone or on an email to to say what he thinks. Say, and Steve said, let's, when can we meet and talk about it?
Yeah.
That's not scheduled yet, but hopes to talk to him and and that Steve will provide verification. Of these items being clearly in the original scope of work.
Was Steve part of that conversation?
He was, him, Rod and Les. And Les is very detail oriented. He has no doubt in his mind. What what was being agreed to. I just wanna, he's doing his due diligence in giving me a heads up before they leave. That we may have some issues and I'm doing the same thing because once they leave for this project, it's. Going to be a lot harder to address it.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll reach out, it's a few things I'm going to do. One, I'm going to reach out to Steve Horton. And and get him in on this. I know he's wanting to get in on it, so I think I don't think it'll be an issue. Two is that we um. Reach out to the individual who walked and was their representative, which is Gus Lorando. And we touched base with him about this stuff because I know those conversations went on in three. Um I don't have it here, but we'll dig out the contract.
Yeah, the the contract probably, it's it's kind of at a, well, the storm basins should be in there. That's, that's a big item, and so I think that should be. And again, that's the one that at least in regard to the driveway. He he still feels confident that's gonna get done. God, that that's so obvious. The parking lot basin is down. Uh has sunk down some, it's less an issue. That's a a bit of a question because they. They certainly didn't make it look like they're prepared to do it. If you're going to replace that, do that basin work. Then you would take out that six extra feet of of pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um I, that sounds good. I do agree with you that Gus would have been on the walkthrough. And he is not the guy here today.
Um yeah.
Let me know if you need anything more from me or Les. I just wanted to deal with it sooner than later.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh thank you for nothing, but thank you.
Not, not good news. Hopefully, it's not, you know, as. Bad as it sounds, we're just trying to be proactive.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um let's start off number one issue. Uh I want to make you aware, it was an interesting situation, but I was notified. Oh, I don't know where I was, but I was notified that um Massachusetts lost its nine one one system, the whole state. For about an hour and some odd many minutes. And um. It was a great opportunity for us. I I when I got, it was a uh Don Bliss who made us aware of it. And when we did, I I said, that's really worrisome, but it's an opportunity for us. I I said, let's use it. And so we crafted a letter. Um we know that, you know, we, just a reminder, we've been working on getting funding. For the infrastructure for Southwest Fire Mutual Aid and um. And we submitted packages to the um Homeland Security Director. And also uh to Chase Hagman, who was the deputy director of Gopher, who is um going to be looking at these projects for the governor. Governor announced that there's five to ten million dollars still available. I mean, told us more than that. Um so um. You know, so we submitted a a full package uh for the stuff uh the far fire mutual aid. And uh the Homeland Security Director then had to pass it on to the governor or not. He's chosen to pass it on to the governor. Uh doesn't mean that it mean 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 anything until it does mean something, but it means we could get five hundred thousand, one million. Or two million or four million, who knows? Um we'll wait and see, but at least we know we're we're uh. We have an opportunity, uh so that's that's a good thing. So he passed it on. But this letter, we followed it up with a letter to the governor that was sent out uh this week. I mean, if you got it, you can read it, but if you want to see it, we can send it to you. But pretty much we stated that the importance that we've sent this on, but also, you know, we wanted to alert that, you know, last week. You know, it was actually human error, but that was human error. We know we have a crisis brewing. We know it's going to fail, the system is going to fail. So it's 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 no difference. The system is going to fail and it's going to go down, maybe in an area. So that area won't have uh quality communication, but it will, that that's going to happen if we don't do something. So we wanted to stress that point, so we sent that on this week and that that right out as soon as we could to ensure we also sent it on to. Um other individuals and so that they were made aware uh of of the letter going out too, so that they can advocate at a a confident level for us.
So it wasn't the technical error.
No, no, it came back. It was more human error. And.
It were definitely where then it was given.
Yeah, but but we we jumped on the opportunity to tell our story again, so that's that's a good thing. The uh the flip side that is that, you know, we did ask for congressional spending request. We knew it was a long shot when they ended up not going with us on this, you know, though they understand, that is an issue. Same time, we've um. I don't, there was a bill that came through N A C O that they wanted all of us to send a letter to our. Uh senators about, and when I saw it, I thought. This is, i- is there language in there that for infrastructure? There isn't. But I was, I asked Kate Horgan up at the DuPont Group to be able to reach out to the people that weren't in that. And uh that wrote this letter of alert. They got my that, one of the individuals and another individual on the phone with us, or we did a Zoom, a quick Zoom. And we were able to talk about what we're trying to do here. And I said, I can't believe that Cheshire County and um. And the southwest corner, I mean, because mutual, fire mutual aid is three counties. It's it's Sault Ste. County. Hillsborough County and Cheshire County on the New Hampshire side, and it's also on the Vermont side. So I said, right there, there's two states involved. And at least six, six counties, because there's three counties on the on the on the Vermont side. This is a nationwide issue, and why are our our elected leaders aren't addressing this? But it was not a problem for us to come up with a plan pertaining to how we move forward with the uh with the with the police dispatch. And the sheriff's dispatch. It's just, there's, there's, it's it's out of balance and we've got to come up with a plan or. You know, this is going to go into crisis at a time when we can't have it going. I mean, and I just argued that infrastructure across the country, whether it's a bridge. Or whether it's infrastructure so that people can communicate when people are in crisis is is critical. So they are, we're going to need be meeting with them and some of their legislative people. Um um and when we head down to to Tampa in a few weeks, to really talk to them about how we uh. How we can address this issue, so that's a good thing.
Can I throw something out there?
Yeah.
Um if if you're meeting with any prospective um successors to to any advocate for um. Community projects spending as much as possible, because the house side kneecap with projects we could apply to um by about seventy five percent. So there's only basically three counties you could end up applying to, and it's mostly for uh police officers and one or two other minor programs. So just um and there hasn't been that much outrage about it, which was surprising. So it just left money for our communities and any way you can advocate for it is is great.
I mean, it really, and 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 there were multiple questions asked, they asked this question. Uh to Senator Moore, Moore.
Yeah.
Moore, Senator Moore um of Kansas, when we were down in Washington. And because he said, if you, you know, I think it was more, you can reach out to your colleagues on the G O P side. They 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 did it, did it on purpose. They don't believe we should be giving money to all causes, uh especially those that are socially, you know, that that uh. Yeah, it's it's like this, right? And so they, they don't, they, people don't sometimes think about the bigger picture. That's, we were just talking about it with. With, you know, making a policy that covers every nursing home. Well, this is the same thing here. They they're shooting them, their own selves in the foot around those things. So um so we're still on it, we're still trying to do something, um and we'll see what happens. But it is in the governor's hands. Hopefully, um he's got to make a decision soon. And the reason he needs to be is because by December of twenty twenty four, he has to have that earmark. And for him not to make a decision sooner for some of these places, because by twenty twenty six, that has to be spent. It's just um, it's just. It's just um, it's just, it's not gonna be healthy for anybody because it's a turnaround time. You have to have the project completed by, or the money spent by that.
And it goes back to the federal government if it doesn't.
Right. So um, so I just, I'm hoping that at some point he makes a decision, he goes to the executive committee. Uh, and they make their decision, they approve it, and then we move forward. It would be great. It would be executive council, or that's the committee council. Um, you know, it would be great if we could get, if we get two million, then we're, then it's a real, I mean, and think about, think about if if we need to come up with four, truthfully, we need to come up with about six million. Um, but really, the number that we're looking at is closer to four million. Because, you know, there's gonna be some level of community cost that's gonna be, but if 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 we don't, if we can't get anything, that's six million dollars. That's going to be put down to towns to cover. For some of those towns, that's gonna be a three to four hundred percent markup of what they're currently paying for a period of time. Until those, and and until things, you know, the the bond or whatever they go, it comes down some level. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. So, I mean, we we've gotta continue to keep fighting and and doing whatever we can. We did talk to Northern Borders. Um, Steve Fortier uh at Northern Borders. There's a chance that we could, we could put something in because um, if we really tailor it towards, this area is huge on on um the trails and, you know, we have a lot of remote areas. And so for us to have a system where people can, and the quality system that people can talk so that that we can can ensure that our 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 rail trails and and our, you know, which feeds our hotels, which feeds our restaurants. That we can, I think we may have a chance of tying something in, but it's it's not as clean as it was when we did the police dispatch because they changed the rules right after we did it. Literally after we did it, another group came in and they said, no, and they said, well, wait a second, you let them do it? It's like, yeah, but we changed the rules after that. So that's where we are with that. I just wanted to point that out. Um um, the, we'll, we'll be putting out um an announcement. At least for one away, I think we're still waiting for the second, for the handyman.
Received. So I just have to
Okay.
Put the other
So we'll be putting two press releases out. We're gonna do it uh everywhere, you know, as you're made aware of. Um, NACO, our National Association of Townies, um, has recognized uh Cheshire County for not one, but two awards. Um, when we looked at it, we were shocked that uh we're the only uh county in New England getting any awards and not getting one, we're getting two.
That's a new program.
And so um the two awards are for the EMS service that we started up. And it's the first in New England, first in New Hampshire, first in New England. More importantly, that we were able to start something up that really cares for our our communities. And then the second one is the Handyman Program. Um, and how it's reaching out and making difference. I actually had a meeting this week with the person that oversees the Handyman Program through uh what is it now? The Hampshire Collaborative, um, which used to be this uh service, well, Service Land. But it's through the Hampshire Collaborative, right? And um
Well, you know. Do the national right-hand issue. Or so you should love me. Well, check something that they have.
Yeah. Yeah, I think lately hasn't been a lot, so.
I mean that maybe
I I I think I think it's just an honor. I think it's an honor for us to be recognized for the work that we try to do for the need and need of the community, whether we wanted to be there or not. Whether we ever had a vision of that or not, which we did on, we just knew that that the situation was in crisis until it all exploded in in uh in in front of us. And so we did what we thought was the right thing to do, and that's that's how people should be judged moving forward is that there was no agenda. It was just that you guys were courageous in making a decision to move forward. And and doing the right thing for the communities as a whole, not just the city of Keen. Uh, which we're in. And I think that, I told you this, that we've been in since January. And this is about a month ago, so it might, it's probably higher now, but we were in the city of Keen a hundred and ten times, of which twenty-nine turned into calls. A lot of times we're we're in the cover, not to, not to um not to do a run. And so twenty-nine of those turned into calls. And that's what we're here. We're here to help. We're here to support. There is no agenda. There's no master plan. I don't sit up at nights and say, how do we move to the next phase? Because I don't want the next phase, if there is a phase. Um, but so that's where we're at. Um, so, um, yeah, heading down, we'll get that in in mid-July. And um
But we need lots of glorious publicity for it.
And we have a plan for that. So we're, we're going to make sure people are made aware. So
They're gonna be annoyed hearing about it by the end of this, so that's okay.
But um, in talking about Handyman, we did meet with um the individual Jessica White, who oversees um the Handyman Program for Service Land. And made a little tweaks to it a little bit. One of the biggest issues we're facing right now is that the contractors that are embedded by Southwest Community Services. They don't have, it's taking them longer to get the projects done because they have other projects that they're doing. Because they're private, they're private uh people, construction workers or, you know, carpenters and and so um they are going to, they they, we've, I've allowed that if they use the same process, the Service Land can go out and vet other people that are, that could come in and do the work. But they they have to go through the same process. They have to have the same level of insurance. They have to have all the, everything else that that is expected through Southwest and
Social.
Yeah. And um currently, they have about three people in the shoot to get um get situations done. And then, you know, they're they're not, one's in Jaffrey, one's, one is in Keen, and the other one's uh like in the Chester, Hinsdale area. So it's not keen centric. It has never been keen centric. It's need based. And they go in and 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 the 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 problem is some of it is, some of them, it's taken, the reason we get to this point is because one individual, we have four in the shoot. And one of them um passed away before we could get there. And it wasn't unexpected, but it was still, and but it is what it is. So we have to, we have to come up with a plan. And so, and as you remember, this is money that we use uh compo share that we set aside every year to ensure they know they have a limit. And when we get to that limit, then we can't do any other projects. And so um that's where we're at. So that's gonna continue moving on. Um, I don't know if you were, did you send the pic, see the pictures around the piano? That I sent you?
When'd you send them?
Yeah, yeah, yesterday, I think.
Text?
Uh, no, it was a email.
No, I know we talked about it in my office, but I don't remember seeing the pictures.
I sent you. So there is a it is a Yamaha grand piano that we've been offered free of charge. And her late husband, you know, played it. I don't know if it's something we want. It looks in mint condition.
Is there one upstairs?
Hmm?
Where do you hear?
No, well, we have one down. We have one currently downstairs. No, you know, could we put it in county hall so that there's a function there that they, I don't know. I mean, I I I don't, does it go up on its side? Can a can a grand piano go up on its side?
With transport, yes.
But I have to redo it anyways, once they go there, so.
Well, my thing is, you know, I, you know, that's my biggest question. I don't have a feeling one way or the other. My concern is is that it will take up space that we need. And um, but it's also a free grand piano, so um, and Yamaha is supposed to be a good piano, so.
It is. It would, it really would have quite functions, you know.
Sorry, Mr. Cino, I would have had it answered out or something, but Yes.
Not a concert grand, but it's
Yeah, it doesn't look too massive in a good way.
Yeah.
How old is it?
I don't know. I didn't, I I I, she didn't say what the year was. She just said that, you know, it was her late husband, so.
Who's the
And the only other thing that um
Is there an idea of it?
Who's the owner?
Uh testing. The only other thing that I uh would say is that uh actually, the email that's on, that's on is
I was just saying, it is great.
Um it would, there would be a cost to it because we would have to hire movers to move it. I'm not gonna have our people
Right.
do that. Uh, and we have to be professional moved. And and there would be a tolling charge at some point, too.
Yes. And and a good piano like that should be tuned annually. Which which costs about two plus months.
Uh, Gina Vogel, and then um it's a Yamaha Baby Grand Piano, GC one model. That it, yeah, Gina.
Again, I think it it will take, it will, it won't be utilized on a regular basis.
Hmm.
Um, unless we contact with somebody that does piano lessons, you know, after hours.
As far as functions go, like it would be a draw for for outside groups to do
Yeah.
more functions.
Yeah.
I know, I'm over one at it. That's cool.
Gotcha.
All right. So I'm gonna move forward as long as I have the blessings free of charge. But nothing's ever free, remember that.
Yeah.
And it would have to, it would have to be turned on its side to get upstairs.
Yeah, and then it would probably, it looks like it would fit in an elevator, no problem.
Yeah.
Um and talk to Mike about storage, cuz if it could stay on its side, could go where the um massage chair is.
Or not maybe massage chair, but yes.
Or near next to it, right? I think that's enough for me.
It would not be appropriate for Baby Grand to be kept on its side of our transport.
Fair enough. All right, will be interesting.
Yeah.
It's one of those things, yes. Yeah, all right. Um all right, that's that one. Um All right, talked about that. Uh, we went to DC. I don't think we've talked since we went to DC.
We didn't.
It was, we um, it was myself and Davis and Luca and um uh Cody Morrison from uh Medic. And then we, and we had invited other people. And uh it ended up being that we had probably close to twenty individuals from Cheshire County, Nano Technology had two people there. Um, the um Sweetwater Distillery had four people there. Um
Hinsdale Economic.
Hinsdale Economic, Swansea Planner. Um, and there's probably others I'm missing. Oh, Alexa. Uh, childcare, uh, she, she's working on childcare
Liz Gray.
Issues.
As well.
Liz Gray, um, digital marketing, Zach, who's
Yes.
From um
Eric, Eric on. I've done the documents.
So all of a sudden, we were like the strength in the room, which is really good. Um
You're definitely the biggest.
And 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 that's
Sponsorship sponsor.
Uh, Senator Shreem hosts in New Hampshire Day. And I've been, I started going, I went the first year. I brought Luca the second year. I brought Luca and Cody the third year. And this year it's blossomed into something that's even bigger.
Nice.
And it's healthy for us. I I mean, I think if if I was gonna look at anything different from us next year, I would bring on and see if we could get more, some, a few more businesses down there. Especially ones that have government contracts. I mean, this year the speakers that they that they had were, you know, we had the deputy um deputy uh Secretary of State. We had the Secretary of Commerce. We had the, what was the guy from uh Science and Technology? And we had the the Secretary of Science and Technology. Um, they had, we had Senator, she always has a Republican colleague come in and talk that she works closely with. And this year was Senator Warren from um from Kansas who came in and they're both on Science and Technology Committee together. Like she, uh, initially, he was the chair and she was the vice chair, and she's been the chair and he's been the vice chair. And he said, that's the only disagreement we have. I wanna be chair. He said, but I, he said, the the great thing that what, he said, you know, you hear all the time. Uh, he's an interesting guy because he, he's also Senator, hasn't endorsed the certain, the GOP nominee. Um, he just hasn't. And he's, and and he's, but he's like when, he said, the one thing you need to know is when our bills come out of our committee, they've been, people, people, they pass through, they are, they are going to become law. They're going to create whatever, whatever next step. Because they know that we work together to compromise to get to where we need to be. And that we realize that we both aren't gonna get everything we want all the time. And so um
It's really nice.
It was nice, it was nice to hear that type of of a conversation. So um, the first night though was 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 uh, we had a, and it was an event in the evening where we uh all the, all the chief of staffs for the, our New Hampshire delegation were there. And then there were other players like New Hampshire Housing Chair and others that we got, get to spend time with and talk and ask questions. And they get familiar with us, too. And I think that's what it's all about. So so when we call, they know who we are. And um, they know that we need, we need our their help. And I think it's one of the things, we have a primary right now. And I think both individuals should be really pressed that there is a section in New Hampshire order here that uh fortunately, uh in my mind we have some, uh, we have a federal delegation that does remember us when it comes to when we speak out on issues, they're they're fighting for us. Um, and so uh, it was, I think overall, it was, it was probably one of the better ones we we've had. Um, going down there, really making connections. I made connections for Keen Housing and made connections for Fire Mutual Aid um and some other projects, and then for the county, a lot of connections. We all, our table, had majority of of uh of of Cheshire County people at it. And Cody asked a question that was spot on. Alexa talked about childcare that was spot on. Davis and I had a question and and I, my question was uh
Yours was
My, the the um the the Deputy Director of State uh halfway through his conversation, I don't even know why I'm telling you all this stuff. There's only really one issue right now. They said, will the Celtics win tonight? And 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 is Persinga is gonna be able to play? That's the question. That's the real question we should be all talking about. And he, and I'm like, you know, and and so he's, and he said, and my brother's a doctor, so I waited until uh, and he's out in LA, and so I waited until, you know, eight o'clock my time to call him because I couldn't wait any longer to find out what he thought about Persinga's being able to play. And he went on and talked, and he never answered the question. So I'm like so, and 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 the senator actually says, you know, that he said, thank you, one more question, takes a question. He's like, I wanna thank everybody. I raised my hand, said, now you can take one more question. And Senator Sheen looks at me with, you know, laser eyes. She's like, I said, you never answered Celtic's question. Is he going to be able to play tonight? And everybody just lost it. And 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 he just went on for another, what, five minutes at least?
Weeks.
Uh, explaining what his brother said and why. And she's, she heans, Senator Sheen's just looking at me like shaking my head, shaking my head, but smiling, laughing at the same time. And her, her uh chief of staff is right next to her, but a little bit behind her, she moves back and goes like this to me. So, hey, whatever it takes, you know, you can ask important questions, or you can ask questions that lighten up the room a little bit, too, at the same time. So it was a, it was a, I think it went, it went well, and all it's about for us is connecting, connecting, connecting. You know, because the only way we're gonna be able to be successful there and maintain the level of of um uh increases in budgets is the, is is going after, going to outside, to outside money to do things that we need to do here. And I think we've been pretty fortunate that there. So so that's DC. Um the uh, we, last week, um, had the official start. We had a, we had a um a soft opening for the, for the first initial podcast I did. But last week, we did, Catherine came in and we did an hour conversation with Catherine and the the nursing home and where things happened to where they are today and the future. And I think if Davis says, I don't look at them. Um, Davis said it came out really well, and he had his wife review it, and she gave us thumbs up, so. Um
What's it called?
It's called uh County Conversation with Chris Coats. So, yeah, we have uh somebody in this room that will be on tomorrow. We announced it um last week that you'd be on talking about Cheshire Power.
We'll do it.
Tomorrow.
What? Tomorrow's the
Ten o'clock.
Yeah?
You sure?
I don't know.
Yeah, we
Yeah, okay. I I I I can't comment on that.
You said the weeks.
That was
That was two weeks ago. Cause we haven't met, we didn't meet on the nineteenth, thirteenth. If you're, so good.
CDC and H's Board at ten o'clock.
So what time of the evening to be over?
What time, are you available? Where is that? Would you be around at nine?
Sure.
Yeah, I could do that.
I might find it, yeah.
You're free, you have something technically active. Um. But not.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so we'll call it nine, um, it doesn't have to last any specific amount of time, I think.
Yeah.
Half an hour minimum, around half an hour is at least pretty good, and then.
Yeah.
More than that, be fine too, but it won't ever go over an hour, really, so we'll make sure you can get to your meeting. And if you want, you can do it right in that conference room too.
Yeah. So here's the, you know, um, here's the other thing is that. Um. That I I talked to you about a second ago, when the chief was here. One of the things that, you know, when you could travel with these, with these other individuals that are working on some things, you see that. There's a litany of things that are going on that are, can have, you know, great impact to our community. But they, but it's a real struggle for them to be able to maintain what we're trying to do. You know, I think I'm proud of the fact that we've been as active as we have with the Chamber or the Collaborative now. Because I think it's making us, it's making a difference, whether it's a major difference or not. The ICE Festival is probably the biggest indicator of us really telling the story and how they had packed streets during that thing. And there's other things that we're doing to continue that that issue. But housing and um. Um, childcare are the two biggest issues facing anybody, any employer out there right now. You ask them, housing and childcare, but we've got too many people staying home. Because it's cheaper for one, one person to stay at home and take care of their child than it is to pay for childcare. And if we don't create a bigger swath. As a community, we're always, not just the county, but the community, we're always trying to figure out what the next step is and how do we deal with the problems, but. Sometimes it's it's a lot of people working a lot of different ways, and sometimes we need this overarching person to really help, you know, strategize and how to bring that forward. So that's just, that's just my opinion, and uh and I'll have a better plan at some point down the road.
Some of the other counties though, um. I know the Portsmouth area is is considerably higher priced, priced housing than ours.
Right.
And um and they don't have the surrounding towns which are cheaper. Just as, just as we have Gilson and Magisture and some of the, some of the poorer towns around here, which are uh, which are. Um, perhaps have housing which is not quite as expensive, but it's a drive to gain.
Well, they're, but they're, they're also in the Rockingham area, and I don't know. I mean, they get the seacoast, I mean, they're set up a little bit better than us, but it's still costly as all.
Yes.
And that's why, that's why we've seen growth in Dover, Stratford County includes three cities, Dover, Rochester and Summersworth. And Dover was the first one to get hit hard with growth, and they've done a good job of managing that. And then came um Rochester and Summersworth. And um, and and that's a good thing, because the farther out you reach, you know, and develop, the the better it's gonna be for everybody in that region as a whole. And that's what they're seeing, but there's still, the median, median price over there is still through, even those places that are growing now are still, you know, high. I mean, how, how, how does a kid coming out of college unless their parents or somebody helps them on some levels? I mean, how do you, how do you get a leg into a a a house in this day and age right now? I don't know, I don't know, and how do you maintain it? I don't know, so it's, it's like, you know, that's, that's the issue that that your generation is really facing. So, so that's why I wanna have more conversations about it, I think it's something that we should be talking about um as a whole. Um, like we did a few years ago when we started pushing back against the state of New Hampshire pertaining to um. Broken, uh broken promises and around funding, you know, and we really, I think we made a difference there too. So I think this is the same type of moment. Um, Todd Gagnon was the CEO of Primex. He um. Met with both Davis and I, and we talked about um. At the Primax Conference, you and I met, and we talked about uh. That their supervisor academy is just not enough. That you can't get somebody into the supervisory academy. So he, and we, we had an idea about local.
Is that something that Primax does?
Yeah, Primax, Primax runs a supervisory academy, and you, you know, we, we, you know. If they offered a supervisor academy here in Cheshire County. Um, and between the city, the county, and uh towns around this area, we probably could get thirty people easily in that, in that class. Because there's just a lot of, we have a lot of people that have moved into new positions and it would benefit them. To to be able to have that opportunity for supervisory skill. So they're working on something, they want us to be the pilot on something around, around trainings. But they also are gonna be doing some other trainings in the meantime, they're gonna have some speakers come in, and they thought. Why not just keep a speaker here an extra day and then bring him down to our area? And then we can, you know, once we get the, once we get the, the, the document that's gonna be. That we can use to send out to towns and the city of Keen and and for our own department heads, we'll, we'll get that out so that we. We'll host it, or we can host it at Keen State College Alumni Center or someplace where it's easy parking, cause it will be during the day. And um, we'll see, you know, we'll see what it is, but I'm not sure what the training quite is yet, but I know that. It gets some speakers coming in, but it's a first step in what I would like to see as. Primax really starting to branch out and having their staff come out. If it's once a month, they come out to Cheshire County and run a program that we can have advertised and have people go to. I think it's gonna be beneficial to the staff that we have. Um, we've had a lot of retirements across the spectrum, not just the county. But the city of Keen, you've seen a lot of retirees, we've got a lot of younger people moving in, which is a great thing, they're quality leaders. But if they could have the opportunity to have uh to be able to have some of the Primax. Uh to um courses that they they run, I think.
Spend all this.
Yeah, well, we, we fund it through our premiums that we've had.
Okay.
So, so that's something that we've been working on with with time, and I think it, I think it's gonna come to fruition. So, um, so they.
Good for them to be expanding what, what they cover, and I guess they benefit from it by just spreading their name around.
Yeah, so you're correct, you're correct, and uh. Uh Cheryl, if you're listening. Um, do you know what the full amount of the opioid funding that we received recently, what that brought us up to? I think it's just under three hundred thousand dollars, like two hundred and seventy-six thousand. If she's listening, maybe she's not listening. I don't know if she is.
Hold on for just a minute, I'm gonna look it up.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's that time of year where I'll come to you, and I wanted to start um a conversation, I don't want a decision today. But I wanted to just have you guys think about some of the things I'm thinking about when it comes to last year. As you remember, we sent out some monies to certain areas um that deal with uh the opioid issue and substance abuse. To help strengthen their programming. And so it's again that time of year where we should take a look at doing that, because by September. I get, I I have to have a letter sent in to the Attorney General saying what we've done with our opioid monies. Um, and I think that there's agencies out there that need our support, so, you know, I'm. You know, I know that Doug has his monies. That he fought hard for and put together a grant proposal that he and the other, other DOCs were able to get a certain amount of monies. And I know that Drug Court hasn't really utilized uh all the monies that they had there, but the sheriff may wanna have some monies this year. Um, and, and I'd like to go back to Reality Check and and maybe not give them the twenty thousand, but you know, ten thousand. Cause they're doing some great work over on on, in their area in Jack Free range. Um, and 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 some other towns in that area, so. And they're doing a lot with manufacturers going in and working with uh manufacturers.
Mary's doing.
Yeah, Mary's doing. Um, you know, just doing a lot of work around, you know, working with manufacturers where, that are dealing with individuals that are. That are dealing with substance abuse issues and trying to educate them and support them to keep those people employed. Um, and during the, during the, the path that the journey they're on to get through those moments in time, so. You know, there's also um. Let me just.
Emma, Chris?
Uh, yeah, actually, I reached out to Phil Weisler, and I'm just gonna get my emails up here in two seconds. Um, as I, you know, so. So let me just get this up.
And then when you're ready, Chris, I have the information.
Okay, why don't you do that while I'm looking this up?
So we just received another um settlement amount in in the month of May in the amount of a hundred and seventy-six thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And um adding that to the current balance that we have in the account. But then also um backing out the fact that we allocated sixty-six thousand. In this twenty twenty-four budget to support some expenses in um Doug's, the DOC's area regarding the Suboxone. And some training at the um Sheriff's Office, and I think maybe a little bit for the Drug Court, but it was sixty-six thousand. It leaves a balance of three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that. Um, that's where Chris is looking to do some other supportive measures.
Yeah.
That was that, I'm sorry, that's separate from the opioid abatement grant.
Totally separate from the opioid, this is for the settlement, this is the settlement monies.
Yeah. And just for education purposes, just a reminder for you guys, is that, you know, we joined a lawsuit, we're twenty, we're part of twenty-nine, we're a sub. Subgroup of of the overall lawsuit, New Hampshire lawsuit, so every time they do a settlement, we get fifteen percent of fifteen percent, so this. Where, where our own little group, that group is fifteen percent of whatever that that's coming in, and from that, there's another fifteen percent. And get back to that for a while times, so.
Like we, I think, might use some of that money to do something about the crisis situation. Chad was talking.
In reference to some of the.
Well, I mean, it looks like we need to have a point person or a point something to to uh deal with. That situation.
I'm more than willing to have those discussions, and when somebody actually comes up with a very clear plan. About that, I'm more than willing to come back to, because we can use this money, I can come back to you tomorrow. And say, well, this also is now in play too, and so. That's something that we've talked about, that there may be some avenues, but it's also funding that's never guaranteed, because at some point, we, I mean, you heard. Well, at least it gets us to a certain point, yeah, so if we had, you know, twenty thousand dollars that we could, you know, you know, you know. Put in the EMS budget so that, you know, that's maybe good, but I'd like to have a little bit. Clear how they're going to use it type thing, now giving example, talk to Phil Weisler. Phil Weisler said, um, he thanked us for the opportunity to actually throw out some ideas. We obtained additional funds to treat people with addiction, we would devote some of the new dollars to pay for medication that treat opioid addiction for people who have no prescriptions. Drug benefit or no insurance. Uh, no insurance at all, specifically, new long-acting medicines are often the last hope for some people. Uh, Subdycade is a two thousand per month and is injectable medicine, and others called uh Bricks A, Bricks D. Which costs two thousand dollars per dose. If you need more information on this, Chief Metablox or Mindy Ashburn would be more than happy to tell you more. We'd also like to spend, support some of the new funds on, to help pay for L L uh lead act. License fees when people start their path towards that credential. Uh, then three, they could, we could also, you offer additional dollars for staff training, professional development in the addiction field, it's often. Keeps the staff retention.
Well, I mean, with, with, you know, the totals it showed, it gave us, it was considerable, not that it was unencumbered from last year.
Yeah.
Alright, so do you have a budget of what you wanted to?
I, 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 I think what I would want, what I wanna do.
The area.
I wanna start. No, no, it's it's closer to a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand.
Which would leave.
And plenty of monies left over, and you know, that's with the idea that they're still settling lawsuits. So there could be more monies, and there's some monies that we're gonna receive on a yearly basis for the next eighteen years. Um, and so there's gonna be some level of monies coming in, I just don't know. But I would never wanna use it all up, but I would like to be be seeing that we are utilizing some level of funding. So that was one, um, and I will, what I will do is I'll put this together in a document so that you guys can see where we would wanna target certain monies. Um, and then go from there, and then, um, where is it? Sort of here, um, I think, something that I've been thinking about for a while, and um. Just need to see if I can find that one too. I hate it all. So I asked the, uh, the kids, Keen Housing Kid Collaborative. Which is a separate organization that works with kids, you know, through Keen Housing. Um, and they've done something, their program has just blossomed into something where they're sending kids to camp, they're sending kids. All over that may not have the same opportunities other kids to be able to, and they've done a Sally Malay, who was actually the life of Rob Malay. Who's the superintendent of this Keen School District.
He's not.
Yeah, he runs the program, so, uh, the Keen Housing Kids Collaborative. And he's like to request a certain amount of money, provide programming to the kids living in Keen Housing, Southwestern Community Services Housing and Housing Choice. Voucher Housing, counteract the negative effects of families impacted by opioid use disorder. This funding will help expand, prevent, and strengthen services to provide programs for children who have been impacted by the. Um, O U D Strategy Board guiding strategies for the US Opiate Abatement Funds. We are aware of ten Keen Housing Eligible Health Schools, a total of twenty-five kids that are affected by opioids. Some of these kids are being parented by grandparents or guardians, they may have experienced or are currently experiencing trauma from their parents. Uh, opioid um uh issues which may include having a parent in jail or rehab. Studies have shown that the, that these adverse childhood experiences can have long-term effects on a child's social, emotional health development. Help all being that persistent adulthood. Cheshire County's supportive uh Keen Housing Kids Collaborative will directly fund the after-school summer programs for the twenty-five kids affected. As you know, our programs help to mitigate and prevent substance use, our goal is to break the cycle. Partly by giving kids from low-income households access to educational and extracurricular activities that will help them. Sandtrack academic development with a more influential peers, we have, we do this by giving kids. We have, we do this by giving kids free access to after-school and summer programs offered by more than forty community partners to help them gain confidence and have fun to achieve in school and at home. So this is the other, the other thing this year. Last year, I looked at the four groups of dealing with individuals. And I thought this year, why not see if there's a program or two, or one or two, that have the ripple effect of these these kids that could end up following their path. But we could also also offer them, just they send kids to camp Dakota, they send kids to all different types of camps and soccer camp, you know, whatever it may be. They 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 help, they come, they raise funds to, that's what they do all year long. It's it's its own party, it's it was developed through Keen Housing, but it has its own board of directors and its own funding. But, you know, that they they go out and they get and and they've done a really amazing job. So that's another group that I'll be looking at. The Carpenter Street.
Do they do, they do things beyond just summer stuff? I mean, like, do they offer support for for kids to do like school sports, little games?
Yeah.
Things like that?
All of them. Yeah, I can have Sally, I can have, yeah, they have Sally, I mean Sally Malay, you know, come in. But they also have, and on at all the sites, they they staff, staff that are able to work with kids when they come back from school at the end of the day. So that's, yeah, they, you know, they said for two reasons. One is they may not have internet, they may not have a laptop, they may not have a computer. So they come to that site and they have computers to work on so they can do their homework, they can look up their issues. They, also, a lot of these kids, their parents might be both be working. So there's someplace to go. And it's just, it it was a program that we we, when I was on Keen Housing Board the first time, it was something that we felt we really needed and it's just blossomed into something bigger and it's, it's really going quite well. So.
So it goes, it's a charter too.
At some levels, yeah, yeah. So and then Kids Collaborative, I I did just talk to Carpenter Street. It was with Yana, Yana, which is You Are Not Alone. Does majority, and this is actually came from the Serenity Center. They said, you know, majority of all the AA and 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 the other type of programming that goes on is goes through, a lot of it goes through that program on Carpenter Street. And, you know, so, you know, the problem is I just have had a hard time reaching to, reaching the the director of the program. So I'm gonna continue to work on that. But that'd be something I'd look at. I know that in the past, the meth clinic down in Swansea, which is a for-profit, I mean, I don't know how people feel, have asked if they could, if there's any way that they could have any assistance on this. And it may be a one-time shot, but it's up to you guys to think about it. And I would look at Serenity Center again, too.
I'll look certainly at the scholarship.
I gotta, I gotta, we gotta, we have a, we have to review the the material that they sent us. But but the bottom line is that they're looking for some financial help. And, you know, I'm not there yet, but it's just something I want you to be aware that they have asked for the, that's what some funding too.
I mean, attaching it to individuals and giving them money to actually attend.
Yeah.
I think would be more appropriate than actually just.
Which on some levels is is occurring because with the grant that that we received through the that that and Doug can chime in on this if I'm wrong. Oh, no, he can't. But the monies they received were for back monies that that they were spending. And some of that would be when they go to the meth, they they take individuals in some, not all individuals, but there's, there's, you know, anywhere between, I I think the last report was six to twelve, that were bringing monies to the, I mean, bringing individuals to the meth clinic for their daily dose. And and so we can take a look at it, it's just, I need to feel comfortable in doing so at the end of the day. And then there's the sheriff, I wanted Eli, I've asked that Eli to see if there is more training that needs to be done. He did a great job of getting speakers in here to talk. And when he does a session, it's not just about his deputies, he brings in departments from across the across the county to hear these course, you know, hear these trainings. So it's always a benefit to the community as a whole.
Thanks.
So those are what some of the ones that I'm looking at right now. I haven't made any final decisions on anything, but I I just wanted to see if we could, if 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 one of, any of those areas are off base, I just felt like we needed to think a little bit outside the box a little bit more and just work with some of these communities to, I mean, some of these these people are taking the next step and what's the ripple effect? And if these kids are being affected, are we helping them maybe just a tiny bit for that moment in time? And maybe we don't see them in Drug Court down the road, maybe we don't see them.
Maybe utilize this money to have its very little effect, because much of it is, we can, while we're still getting it.
I I would tell you that I've had contact with some kids that have been to the Y camps. I've had kids that have been able to voice scouts or May Camp or Mayo or something, I can't remember what it is. But there's multiple camps that kids go, they go one time, it's a lifetime memory. They meet some people that they would never have had the opportunity to meet. They get to do things that they and and live.
First build a lumber camp.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it. But it's an opportunity in a moment in time that they may not have had otherwise. And they remember this the rest of their life. We had, we used to take in fresh air kicks when I was a little kid from New York. We still to this day get Christmas cards from some of them who are now grown up, have their own families. But it was a moment in time, it was a two-week period where they had a respite from all the craziness of their life, that they were able to come up here and just experience it. And it wasn't anything special, it was just, it was just norm. You know, it was just like they didn't, there was no expectation more. There was food on the on the on the table, there was things to do and all that.
Now, I mean, you're seeing a lot more of that, you know, back in the sixties and seventies than you do today.
Yeah. So that's where we're at. That's what we're looking at and and that's just one one phase of it. The other phase of it is we are also in in looking at, you know, we we receive, we we have received the five point two million pro share funding this year. And it is a little bit of a drop from the year before, which was five point four million, but it's still, by average, we are still receiving. We're in the top, I'd say, top four of receiving level of funding that we do. There's a lot of.
State, you mean? Counties within the state, I mean?
State and county, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Why did we get?
There's a formula to it and Catherine or Cheryl can talk to it better than I. But the bottom line is this is the number that that is that is created and that that we get. And so I am talking, looking at some projects, which I'll come back on more of a forum that you can see. Last year, we talked about the the out in the Center Street parking lot, there's a sidewalk right there. We wanna make some changes, not not eliminate the parking lot, I mean, the sidewalk, but to improve the sidewalk and putting, bring it all the way down and stuff like that. So there's some monies there we're gonna be looking at.
That sidewalk, sidewalks?
Not the front sidewalk, the side sidewalk that's in the parking lot. By, then that, but I was for prevention, that there's, it's, there's some cracks and we have to update that. So there's, I would like to not put that in the budget and have that addressed at some point. There's the windows in the foyer by the elevator that have this fog over it, that's because they failed. Unfortunately, when you deal with those situations, it's the whole window you have to replace, not just the window pane. And so that's something I wanna take a look at. I want, you read an article, I I mean, you may have seen an article in the paper where the city of Keen has all its lifeguards. If you read the article, you would see in it that they also thanked us for the for the monies that we set aside to license people. We've heard that time and time again. You know, I, it's from Jaffrey to to Ringe to Troy to Swansea to wherever throughout, that this has made a huge difference. And all we did is that we set some monies, American Rescue Plan funding aside to help pay for the licensure of the lifeguards, because the last thing we wanna do is, I mean, who knows, like that is ten thousand. You can basically take clouds. It was twelve, maybe it was twelve, twelve, it was nothing in the scheme of things. And it has had huge impact. If you remember, Robin Hood was closed, it was closed because they didn't have enough lifeguards. San Pon in Troy, I think it is, didn't have, posted signs at certain times that it's one of your own risk. You know, these, they were all, everybody was struggling to find lifeguards. And so we helped very strongly. And if we could set another small amount aside like that for the next, and this this lasted us two, two, three years, this money. And so if we can again try to do the same thing, I think that would be helpful and and to our communities. Just it's a, you know, sometimes it's the smallest things that have some of the biggest impact. Or our families can go and relax and enjoy, you know, the waters and cool down on a hot day or whatever it may be. Or they can send their kids there so they can go to work. I mean, I don't know how many times my mom said, go to Robin Hood Park, I've gotta go and do this today.
Wasn't it about fifty lifeguards that could be trained, just that amount of money?
I think it was. Over time, I, yes, it's, I think, though, dollar for dollar, I think it's been a huge benefit to the county as a whole.
And it's also a great benefit to these kids as well, because they can get jobs, they can continue jobs. I was a lifeguard seven or eight years when I was in high school and college.
Yeah.
Summer job, they're great.
Yeah, so I I, you know, so that's something. There's there's radically world question, you know, that that they they came and they presented. And, you know, so now that we know the money, you know, do we, do we do any level of funding for them, you know? And say this is, we say this could, this doesn't mean that next year you can, you know, that the county's gonna be able to do it, but this year we can do it. But we wing it, maybe we don't do the fifty, maybe just do ten thousand this year, you know, and and slowly weaken, weaken them off. You know, we've got, the Sentinel has approached me about being a sponsor for their two hundred and fiftieth birthday. They're doing all kinds of different things. And I, for initially, I thought, hmm, I don't know, but then I thought.
Twenty fifty, two hundred and twenty fifth.
Two hundred and twenty fifth, that's what.
Seventeen seventy nine.
Yeah, I just know it's a lot.
About that paper.
Okay, but I just, I just know, know that it's, it's not, I mean, with the county, and then they've covered us through the years. We, we, I gave them so that they could write it, that they're gonna at some point do a story about how, you know, we've written that the annual report has been done by John Prentice when he started the Sentinel. You know, there's all kinds of different stories, but, you know, if we were one of the sponsors, you know, we'd be front and center. And and should we not, I mean, we're all talking about our story. So, you know, it's a very small amount of money that they're, they'd be asking for. It's just something to think about and it's a one-time thing. They're not gonna do another two hundred and twenty five birthday, no, two hundred and twenty six birthday next year.
They'll do two fifty.
Two fifty, but we've got a few years between now and then. And I doubt, I think Davis is the only one that really has the best, it could be the one that's still here that remembers that. And even, you know, even him, by that thing, you might be along the term.
Sort of in the house, get a house like a weekend event or something.
They're having a week-long event. And one of the things that they're doing is they're going to be using the Latches parking lot. You know, they're gonna use the, the, they're gonna quarter off the Sentinel East Street right there. And in the parking lot, the city owns, in our parking lot. And they're gonna have vendors, in our parking lot, they wanna put a beer tent, which they've got all the right things to do that, and music, a stage and music. And and if they like the backdrop of the brick building behind it, all that jazz, where do we put it? No, that's just that Latches Theater, it was have them to read. And it's only, and that would only be a day, that'd be a Saturday, and anybody that parks there now would be asked to park up on on the other two parking lots, which would be multiple spots, because it'd be empty because it's the weekend. But overall, you know, just, I just think it makes sense and I'll come back to something around that. And then there's the, then there's the Collaborative, you know, the Chamber. You know, last year, you know, over the years, we've given them, we wrote a grant for three hundred thousand. Businesses matched that with business matched that with a hundred thousand, make it four hundred thousand. We gave them two hundred and fifty thousand, last year we gave them a hundred thousand match, right? Currently, we're at about eighty thousand of that match, that turns into like almost a two hundred thousand. And by the end of the year, they'll have the, all the, all of that. Well, I don't know if we give them as much as we did last year, but we give them something. And slowly, you know, because it, we're, we're really starting to tell the story. And for us just to walk away, doesn't help us, it doesn't help Cheshire County as a whole, doesn't help the Manonah region as a whole. We we need to be, I really believe we need to be aggressive when we do this type of thing. I think Julie and and Luca, who have sat in front of me multiple times, but they also sat in front of the delegation, which a ten-minute presentation turned to an hour conversation. There is, there's, people understand there's a need here. So these are things that we're thinking about, but that's about, that's about it. And then the rest of the money would go back to the fund balance to be able to move forward. So I wanted to start talking about it now because I'd like for you guys to think about it. And then if you have questions, and what we'll do is over the next week or so, at least before the, before the meeting on the tenth, I I would hope that by the 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 meeting on the tenth, we would have a clear direction of how we wanted to move forward. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. And then the old, the the two other things I have on here is, one is, next week is July third. And even though it is July third, I don't know if you, if anybody's not going to be here. But I I don't, I mean, Cheryl and I talked about it the other day. And I think we should actually meet and if we get near the third, and it just doesn't seem like there's gonna be a lot of business. But I think, you know, Jack was here today, we are going to have multiple presentations. And I called it off and because I wanted him to be here for, Cody was coming in to talk about medic and Alexa was gonna come with him to talk about childcare. So we pushed that off, we think, to the tenth. But there's maybe some other things that we need to get in, in the meantime.
I'll be here next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already had my day too.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we're, let's plan on the, on the.
I'm on a crunching vacation, not quite.
But but I, and just because the, then we have the tenth and then we have the seventeen. And then we're off, the following week, we're off. I mean, well, I'm I'm on a two-week vacation that I take every year. So the first week, I always, we always don't have a meeting that week unless you guys need it. And Cheryl and Davis could run that if you need me. And then the following week, I tune in, even though I'm on vacation and we have a meeting, we've been doing that for years. So it's just something to think about. And the last thing is that we did have the DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Meeting. It went extremely well, we had over, I think, close to twenty people in attendance. They weren't all department heads, they were different individuals with different reasons why they were there. And out of it came three individuals wanting to step forward to run the group. And I don't wanna run the group, I want the group to run itself. And it was, I think, a healthy conversation, Cheryl was there. I don't know, Doug, were you there? No, you had people, you had a lot of people there. And Davis was there. And so I think it was a very healthy conversation. And like I said, so we met with the three individuals, they put together an agenda. They're running it, we have a separate meeting today, they're running that meeting. And and we don't have an agenda, we have an agenda for the meeting, but we don't have a bigger agenda. We're letting the group really direct that. I know that certain organizations like the City of Keen, they have, they have something like this too. And and, you know, they, if there's policies that come up, they look at that. I I think that's important, but I want this group to get, give me the right direction. Because if we can come out with something, a group of, and we can offer this up as, you know, this is, this is what we do in Cheshire County when people come in to take a look at working for us, this is another benefit. If people know that we have a DEI committee that really is is helping educate all our workforce and on all of the issues that may be evolving in this day and age. I think that's healthy, I think it's healthy for everybody involved. So very appreciative of all that have come forward to help make this move forward. It could all wash out tomorrow, but I I think there's energy behind it to make this.
Well, they can't make it work.
Right.
Chris, it is one of the, is it not an objective to influence hiring policies or have quotas or anything like that out of this group?
I don't know, I don't think we've had that kind of conversation yet. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you that 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 the conversation that we're talking about right now, you know, they're gonna talk about today, starting to put together a mission statement. Why are they here? What 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 is the, what is the real agenda? And I want the group to really discuss it. In my mind, do I have thoughts? Yeah. But but, you know, you know, it it it, I I would hope that on some levels, it does help us shape, you know, to, you know, our 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 thoughts on how we, how we move forward with with certain certain issues in this day and age. But I I don't wanna get ahead of myself. I'm trying to really let the group help make that decision. And and then I meet with the, I meet with the, along with Kim and and Davis has been. And, and then I meet with the, I meet with the, along with Kim and, um, and Davis has been part of those discussions too. Um, I try to, we meet with the leaders of that group and we try to plan what next steps are. And I think the other thing that we need to remember on this is that we need to actually have, you know, one of the things I want to do is have people come in and talk about certain issues that are going on, you know, from their perspective. You know, these are professionals that do this level of training on, on a rate, so the group has that conversation because it's really interesting, some, some people are there because they want to learn more in that group. Cause they don't pretend to understand it and they're very open about that, they don't know how to say, they're, they're nervous about asking questions because they may not say it right. But there's other people in the group that say, no, that's fine, that's fine, we want those questions. It's, it's, it's really was an interesting thing when, when a supervisor who was in that meeting asked the question and somebody in his own department said, I hear you, this is my aim, but this is how that came across to me, I just need you to know that. But it's, and it wasn't like that, that the individual walked away and was like, that, that supervisor walked away, it's like, that was, that was amazing. Because I don't know how to talk about it, I don't know how to move forward. And that's, I think, happening across the campus, when you have five hundred employees, when, you know, when you have people, and, and it's not right or wrong, it's just, I mean, when we, you know, we're, we're a very white community, we're very, you know, heterosexual community. We're very, you know, it's, you know, introducing these conversations on this level can only, they can then take those back and introduce that to the overall. So I think that's the influence I'm hoping it has initially. If it happens that then we take a look at policy, we look at certain other things that we wanted, that's fine. I just got to get them there first, I think I'm, I'm doing a disservice if I jump to the next level.
Yeah, I get it, I'm jumping ahead in my question, I, and that's fine, I, I think.
No, that's fine, I.
It's a good process.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I just, and you know, you've got about three, I think, three, at least three, yeah, three people from your department over there, and I think that's healthy. Um, you, you guys deal with a whole different, um, uh, a bunch of issues because of your population within the prison too, not just within the staff. So I think it's healthy, so thank you. So that's what I have, um, where's my?
Yeah.
Agenda, thank you, I don't know where it went. It was right there, that. Uh, that's what I had, is there any, uh, old business?
Um, additional business, old or new, awards for the NHAC save what you do on Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can talk after.
Yeah, 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 um, yeah, we're, we're right where we need to be, so.
Great.
Um, new business?
Uh, Chuck Ridge, I mean, contacted you about, um, getting grant assistance for, uh, the.
I, I went to a celebration, I, I went to a celebration of life.
Yeah.
And, uh, Chuck was there, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right, he's already filled you, so you will be back?
Yeah, I will.
What is that, may I ask?
Well, these, yeah.
The others are, they're, uh.
They, they got a grant to, um, to buy a bridge, an old, the old bridge, we put over, one. But there's two bridges actually, one and one.
Three.
Well, Swansea Factory, what, right there, it's.
It's the grant, it's the two bridges they're putting in, but they're also renovating the Stoneridge Bridge. Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, they're, you're going to utilize the, the old, um, the, the bridge they just took out of, uh, Iowa Street. They can put that over Swansea Factory.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, and then they bought a bridge in, from London, they for a dollar.
Yeah, those big, big curved things.
Yeah.
So.
And then they got to renovate the Stoneridge Bridge itself, um, probably finally they, I think, they're, 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 they're solidified and, well, railings are appropriate.
And, and I, if I, if I understand correctly, they will, they apply for race?
Yeah.
I got it, right, a race grant, uh, through the government, it's a major grant, um, and it's a, a, a major. I mean, we've covered downtown Keene, we've covered this out here, my understanding, and, um, so they, they, that should come out, that announcement should come out tomorrow or Friday, that if they got it. Now they're in competition with others in the state, Hampton, so he's been one of them. Doesn't mean they can't give out more than one award, but what we did when we were in Washington is we tag teamed it. And we said, if you give it to, if, if, if you're looking at Hampton, you need to look at Keene too. That they, that we both play a critical part and that both are deserving. Um, I had an opportunity to meet with Chris Pappas, who's not our congressman, but he was at New Hampshire Days and I pulled him aside and I, I told him that it's really important. He sits on the transportation committee, that is one of the committees that makes this decision. Or, and, and so he, uh, I said, as, as important as, as it is for Hampton to get it, which is in his district. I said, it's just as important for New Hampshire, uh, for Keene to get it, for the work that they need to do over here. And who's to say that two bodies can't? Now, there's also, I think, two others in New Hampshire that are applying for it. But we decided the, you know, the chamber president for Hampton stood up in another meeting that Chris Pappas was in, talking about the raise grant and then brought up the city of Keene. So I turned around and did the opposite for, with Chris. I don't know if it's going to help or not, we also had an opportunity to talk to some people from the Department of Transportation. I mean, it's just, anything we can, we can do as a county, we're going to do. And I think Elizabeth and her team has did a great job of putting together the grant. Um, it's interesting because I know a few years back Suzanne helped them write, write a huge grant for the EDA grant. Um, and I don't know, I, I, I'm guessing that that helped them with this grant even. But, um, but I know that part of that grant that they're asking for, I said, I think the minimum is, you have to have like a ten to fifteen million dollar project. That's the minimum, so they're, they said not small grants if you land them. So if, if that's the case, you know, that they could end up paying for the good portion of the downtown project and the bridge all at once, which would be a huge win for everybody involved, so I'm hoping that they, they land this.
And the rail trails are fabulous, for the last two, three years, I've been doing a fair amount, biking and walking on the trails. And, uh, and they are so refreshing and, uh, enjoyed by many people, but there, but there could be five times more people. And they, and they still would not be at all crowded.
Well, I, I, well, I think more importantly, I mean, you just hit it, you know, people ride on it, it's an economic, it's an, it, like the arts are.
Yes.
The rail trails are an economic, you know, engine for this area, and if we don't nurse those.
Yeah.
Yeah, this project here is sort of like a, a link, a major link.
Yes.
Uh, for, for the.
Thank you. I just want to. Hey.
Sorry.
Um.
Yeah, so getting that part, you know, uh, uh, completed is, is going to really go a long way, you know, for usage of the.
Right, but I mean, I think we, we, whatever we can do, I mean, and, and sometimes I don't think people understand this, but whatever we can do that help in a way that makes sense to support these type of opportunities.
That's right here, what you was talking about, it's just, you, you said that, you know, uh, he just wants, uh, help.
Right.
Writing the grant, and they, and they would administer it.
They would have to come up with a portion of, of the grant, there's like, uh, it's like three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars or something like that. And, um, and, you know, and, and I guess they were in a meeting with Mike Kowalski, who is, you know, we, we work closely with, you know, we always thought Pathway does their thing. We need to help the outside because if we don't help the outside, then you can't get Keene. So it sort of hurts everything, so we landed about eight brains, I think it was, for communities throughout so that they can have that connection. So, you know, I, if I think it makes, if Susan has the bandwidth to help on any level, um, then let's make it happen. And so, yeah, I'll get back to Chuck today and, and tell him, but Suzanne, Suzanne's on vacation, so it just will have to be wait, wait until that, that's the right time. And, uh, I also, Ted hunted me down prior to, for hiring Chuck even.
Cause, yeah, yeah, that is, yeah.
Yeah, so, all right, great. Um, motion to accept the consent agenda, uh, and weekly manifest on June fifth, twenty twenty four.
To move second.
Okay, all in favor?
Fine.
All right, uh, any calendar items?
No, you already covered July third, that's really it.
Okay.
July third, we're back at Twelve Court Street and then, uh, following week as well.
Okay.
Following week, um, sorry, is that D O C?
Okay, and then, uh, uh, just adjourned. What did you adjourn? Yes.
Do, I have an update, um, Steve came over and just met with Les, or they talked, do you want to do that now or do you want to call me?
I don't know, we're, we're here, might as well do it.
I know, you, you, the suspense, um, basically Steve is going to check his notes, documentation as to what he put forward formally to the, to the contractors and then get back to, to Les. But it may be a good idea to also for you to talk to Steve and, and just stay in the loop. But, um, but, and then he mentioned, well, the, the bid came in lower than expected. Said, yeah, well, that doesn't solve this issue. If the bid came in lower than expected, that's great, but we still understood it included those five or six items.
Right, that's what I would say to you is the same thing, is that, that I want to know what was exactly talked about and what wasn't talked about. And if there's something outside of that, that needs to be added on to that, that's different than, than actually them doing the work that was, uh, agreed upon.
Yeah, and ultimately I think Gus is import, very important because he was, obviously, that's his company. And, uh, it's his guy on site saying some things that seem, um, off.
Yeah.
But he was there when Steve, Les and Rod and when they had the walkthrough, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to you if you want to call him, uh, he's doing, he's checking that and, um, I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and I already have an email in to Steve to give me, uh, contact me anyways.
Does this look like a?
All right, thank you.
Does this look like a major dispute?
Thanks.
What we've done is what?
I, I think it's just a few, if this happens all the time, people communicate.
Yeah.
And then we go back in our notes, we find this, this happened at this nursing home all the time. Uh, it, it was, you know, we, that's why we're having weekly meetings to tighten things up, make sure everything.
I definitely do this thing once.
Understood, that's how I always want, and I don't want to have to come back and say, hey, do this too. So, but it did, you know, we, I think we set aside and, and Cheryl can always tell me, like, either two hundred and twenty five or two hundred and fifty thousand for this project. It came in at about one ninety eight. And, um, so you do have some wiggle room, but more importantly, what did we agree upon? What's the contract say? And let's get that done, because that's, I, I can't believe between Steve, Laszlo and Rod, that they left anything unturned. So, and I actually think we haven't added, uh, twenty thousand in there, uh, of work that's never been done. I don't know if it's been rolled over or not, but, but I can talk to Cheryl about it when I get back to the office. All right.
Thanks.
So, yeah, motion to adjourn, all right, Ms. Riley, all right, Ms. Clark, we are adjourned.